The meeting is being aired live and recorded for future broadcast. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The council has been made aware of the passing of three of Bridgewater's military veterans. I'd like to take a moment to read their names before observing a moment of silence. The first is Joseph J. Biancini, Jr. of Bridgewater, passed away on October 31st, 2023, at the age of 89. Joseph was a United States Army veteran who proudly served his country. Frederick P. White of Bridgewater died peacefully on October 22nd, 2023. He was 77. U.S. Army veteran who served in Vietnam from 1968 to 1969. Joseph F. Pachoni, 80, of Bridgewater, died peacefully, surrounded by his loving family, on Monday, October 30th, 2023. Joe spent six years in the United States Marine Corps Reserve, mustering out as a sergeant. I'd ask that all those in attendance, please join us for a moment of silence to honor these veterans. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from October 24th, 2023. All councilors were in attendance. Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
You have to have roll call because Susie's via.
Actually, I paused. I realized, Susie, is she on Zoom?
She is, yep.
Okay. So we do have one counselor attending remotely. Counselor Susie Robinson is attending remotely. Because of that, all votes will be roll call votes. So we're going to retake that vote. I'd ask if we could do a roll call vote.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Great. The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is item B, announcements from the president. Ronald Ledoux passed away on October 26th. He joined the town in 1987 and retired as the roadway superintendent in 2021. Our condolences to the family. The next item on the agenda is item C, proclamations. We have none this evening. Next item is item D, citizen open forum. If we have anyone from the public that would like to speak, we'd invite you to approach the podium. Okay. Seeing none, we will close citizen open forum. Moving on to item E, appointments. We have none this evening. Moving on to item F, hearings. We have no hearings this evening. Moving on to item G, license transactions. We have one. We have petition P, 2024-003, the granting of the transfer of a common victular license for Cafe Madeline. The time is 7:05. I will now open the public hearing. And if the petitioner is present and would like to make a brief presentation, we'd invite them to approach the podium. Not necessary, but invited. Okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. I just would like to say hello. My name is Andrea Sevietas, and I'm very glad to be here tonight. I'm just trying to open up a little cafe in town. I've had another business in town a few years back. It was Lulu's Cafe originally. That was about eight years ago. And yeah, I'd like to open up this little cafe. Call that to my granddaughter from Madeline, who's two and a half and very excited. And we're going to have, it's like a juice bar, smoothies, some coffees, little sandwiches, a couple of breakfast items I'd love to grab and go.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public? Okay. Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? I see none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? I see none. Are there any questions from the town councilors? Okay. Seeing none. The time is 7:07. I will now close the hearing, and I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. If we could have a roll call vote?
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. Chase?
And Mr. Murphy.
Seven in favor.
We missed one.
Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Murphy, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
I mocked him twice. Seven, seven for zero against.
Good luck.
Yes.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item H, presentations. We do have a presentation this evening. National Grid Tree Maintenance Team will provide, I think, some short remarks. This was requested by Counselor George, and he had wanted an update on the schedule of tree maintenance for the town. This is in response to that request. Feel free to approach the podium.
Good evening. My name is Joseph King, forestry supervisor with National Grid. As requested, just going to make a few statements regarding National Grid's vegetation management program. National Grid seeks to provide safe and reliable electric service through a cost-effective and integrated vegetation management program. This includes our maintenance cycle pruning, hazard tree patrols, response to customer and community requests, and company and customer construction projects, as well as two statewide programs called the Enhanced Hazard, excuse me, Enhanced Hazard Tree Mitigation Program and Enhanced Vegetation Management Programs. A little bit about our cycle pruning. Maintenance pruning specs and schedule is based on a five-to-seven-year-per-circuit cycle. Minimum pruning specifications are intended to maintain safe clearances for that time period. Some clearance exceptions exist on a case-by-case basis if we have sensitive customers that would prefer we do a light prune or more prescriptive work. Circuits are pruned in their entirety. They're not limited by municipal borders. Residents are notified of upcoming pruning cycles either in person, by direct mailings, or by door hangers prior to any work taking place on their property. All primary and secondary wires are trimmed during the cycle pruning. House service drops are customer responsibility, but we do review them upon request. Each year in the South Shore, we prune anywhere from 350 to 400 miles of primary line. Our standard clearance specifications are six feet to either side of the primary conductor and 10 feet above and below. We also seek to remove nonplanted tree species up to eight inches in diameter that are capable of reaching the conductors within those cycle prunings. Hazard tree patrols. National Grid proactively patrols areas periodically throughout the year to identify and mitigate hazard trees. The locations of these patrols are based on reliability metrics and known areas of poor tree conditions. Certified arborists assess trees that have a significant risk of impacting primary lines and seek authorization for their removal, whether it be public or privately owned trees. Patrols are also conducted after significant weather events to identify any compromised trees that we may want to take further action with before they fail. Regarding customer and community requests, forestry representatives in the South Shore respond to over 2,500 requests each year in the South Shore alone, which includes 21 towns and Nantucket. This includes requests for tree assessments, for pruning, and for hazard tree removals. Forestry representatives review each request and follow up with the customers either in person, over the phone, or with a door hanger. In addition, National Grid does perform company-driven and customer-driven construction projects. These could include asset maintenance and replacement, system improvement, service upgrades, new installations, distribution generation, and also mass DOT roadway expansion projects. During this time, National Grid performs a more prescriptive tree work, including pruning and removals to maintain safety and reliability on these projects. The two statewide programs that I mentioned, the Hazard Tree Mitigation Program and the Vegetation Management Program, are basically enhanced clearance specifications or enhanced hazard tree inspections that occur along mainline three-phase section of circuits, which have been experiencing either a high frequency or high-duration tree-related outages. This is something that I don't directly oversee, but am involved when it comes to the South Shore District. The enhanced clearance specifications basically is 20 feet of overhang above the wires and eight feet to the side, as opposed to six and 10 on our standard clearance spec. So with that, I know that was a lot of information in a short period of time. I welcome any questions or any specific concerns anyone might have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Yeah. Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. So thank you very much for coming. So just a couple of things, because we had talked earlier. Can you tell us in regards to if someone were to call with a tree concern and the tree is actually on private property?
Yep.
Talk me through the process and what you've seen in regards to people that are, you know, allow it versus people that don't, in regards to the pruning?
So if a customer approaches us with a request, more times than not, it's implied that they are looking to have tree work done on their property. We'll come out, we'll assess the tree, and see if it's something we can help with, in which case, we obtain written authorization for any work that's outside of our standard pruning spec. So if someone has a tree that part of it's overhanging the wires, but the majority of it leans away, we're going to prune it in a way that would be in excess of what we would do normally. We obtain a written sign-off with the understanding that the customer may pursue private removal for that tree. In Massachusetts, we don't have a right to trim. We don't have a right to remove trees on private property or public property without prior authorization, so we strictly adhere to that.
Okay. So conceivably, someone could call you with a concern, not on their property, but, you know, going down a street. If it's a, if the tree's on private property and you reach out to the property owner, the property owner may decline allowing you to prune it. You have no recourse from that whatsoever, correct?
That is correct. We attempt to reason with the customer, or at least get them to understand our perspective or why this tree would be a concern, whether it was brought to our attention from the neighbor or something we found more organically. When we solicit tree work, we're trying to firstly educate the customer on what we're looking at and why, what the wire configuration is, how many approximate customers are served off of that, the importance of mitigating that hazard. But at the end of the day, if the customer refuses or doesn't want the work to take place, we document that and we go about our way.
Okay. Your normal cycle of review, what's the timeframe? Is it five, five years basically for that, every five years to do a comprehensive review of a town to determine on your own what needs to be pruned versus what doesn't need to be pruned?
That's incorrect. Nope. Our maintenance cycle is based on a five-to-seven-year rotation, so each circuit is being pruned within a five-to-seven-year timeframe. However, that's, doesn't include like a townwide survey or things like that. We do periodic circuit reviews, basically multiple times throughout the year, and it's based on reliability or if we know where we have pockets of poor tree health. So definitely more frequent than five years. In fact, we have areas that we patrol multiple times a year at different seasons, so we get a better angle on, you know, what the tree conditions are during leaf on or leaf off.
And then you focus on circuits?
We focus primarily on circuits, but we also do, you know, town by town, we'll get a road atlas or we'll follow it along on the GPS, and we'll go within a town border. But primarily, it's circuit-based, you know, because it, the circuit is how we measure our reliability, not so much on a town level.
So ballpark, how many circuits are there in Bridgewater?
In Bridgewater, there's portions of, you know, there's not one circuit that stays in Bridgewater. We've got several that kind of finger, you know, spread out. I wouldn't be able to give you an accurate estimate on how many different parts of circuits are in Bridgewater, but I would, I would say it's probably 10 to 12.
Okay. That's what I was asking for, ballpark.
Yeah, we have two major substations in Bridgewater. We have the transmission substation on Pleasant Street and also the distribution substation on Mill Street. So primarily, Mill Street Substation is where most of the customers in Bridgewater are fed from.
Okay. And then, then my last question. One thing I learned too, when people are looking at poles, National Grid doesn't own all the wires, correct?
That is correct. There are other vendors on the pole. It could be Comcast, Verizon, you know, whatever the providers are, but the electric is generally configured at the top of the pole.
So do the other providers, are they also responsible for tree maintenance if there's something that's going to jeopardize their line?
Not to my knowledge. They don't, they respond if needed, but I don't believe that they have cycle maintenance pruning to maintain their wires. They're considered non-energized, and the tree conditions near those wires don't necessarily affect reliability of their service.
Great. Thank you.
Just a quick question. If somebody called me as a town councilor and asked what the process is for having a tree looked at, what is the best way for them to do that?
So the best way for them to do that is to call National Grid's customer service. It'll generate a work order, and that'll be funneled to the proper channel, whether it's tree-related or otherwise, if they have other issues, wire-related, gas-related, et cetera. But the simplest way is for them to call customer service, then there's a record of it on our end, and we can follow up with that. We, we tell our customers that we will follow up within 10 to 14 days. Honestly, it's much sooner than that. That's in case we're responding to any storm event or any other unforeseen emergency. Realistically, I would say within three days, we're getting back to most people who, who call in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any additional questions? Maybe just a final question.
No, I'm also.
Just a final question from me. You mentioned the tree health, so could you talk a little bit about how you maintain the health of the tree as part of the pruning process?
So tree maintenance isn't fully in our purview, but when we, we know where we have pockets of trees that are in poor health, and those areas kind of get patrolled a little more frequently. When it comes to our pruning, we prune to industry standards, best management practices. We're making cuts to promote directional pruning and also the healing of the cuts to try to limit the amount of cuts we'll have to make next cycle. The more cuts you put in a tree, the more energy it has to spend trying to heal and, and, you know, recover from that. So the less cuts we make in a tree, the better, which is why we, customer outreach is very important to make sure that the customers know exactly what's going to take place on their property, and if they have any questions or if we need to deviate from that spec, we do that.
Great. And do you have like a tree warden or, or someone on staff that understands?
So, sure. I, I am a board-certified master arborist through the International Society of Arborculture. I have two team members on my staff that are also certified arborists through the International Society of Arborculture. Most of us have gone to school for it or have worked on a crew and gained experience. I myself started with a tree company and have taken various roles to my current position.
Great. Thank you. Okay. I don't think we have any additional questions. Thank you very much for coming in this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, we'll move ahead with the agenda to item I, the town manager's report. The town manager isn't able to be here with us this evening, so he's being represented by the assistant town manager. If we could maybe move on to item A, a High Street Bridge closure update?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, the project mobilization on the High Street project, bridge project began in early spring, but the bulk of the work has been done this fall. We are happy to report that the road is tentatively scheduled to be opened by the end of next week. Our DPW director, Mr. Ettenero, has been working diligently with our contractor, Manafort Construction, to expedite this road opening, having staff work on the weekends to make sure that we get this road opened. Residents will see that a roadway binder is being installed so that the roadway is passable, but the top coat will go on in the spring and, as well as plantings will be done in the spring. We thank the residents of the area for their, for their patience, but we do expect to have this opened by end of next week.
By the end of next week?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Maybe if I could just confirm the last part of the update. So I think you said there's a binder that allows us to open it at the end of next week, and then there'll be some remaining work done in the spring?
Yes.
For the top coat? Okay.
The top coat and, and planting. So all construction should be done by March 2024.
Great. Thank you. The next item we have is item B, the Energy Committee Update. This is something that was specific to the town manager, so I would suggest that we continue this until the next agenda when Michael is back. I would entertain a motion to continue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Could we do a roll call vote? Yep.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Passes, we'll address it on the next agenda. That concludes the town manager's report. We'll move on to item J, discussions. We do have one discussion this evening. It's Guidelines to Citizen Participation Mechanism. If I could take a few moments to introduce it and then maybe share some comments, and then I would invite the council to weigh in as well. So as president, I was included on some communications related to a group of citizens that are trying to exercise an article from our charter called the Citizen Participation Mechanism. It's Part One, Article Eight, Section Eight dash one, Citizen Initiative Measures. This group is attempting to, to use this and has had some confusion about it, and so I'd like to take the opportunity to, to talk about this process with the full council. Other councilors are welcome to weigh in, and where I'm aware of some questions, provide answers. So I did provide everybody with a handout, and in your packets, you have a copy of the charter language as well. I'm going to summarize. I would add the caveat that this is not legal advice. This is my summarization as council president, but I would encourage everyone to read through it, and I would encourage anyone in the public to seek their own legal advice. So the way that this works, there is a clause in our charter that allows citizens who are interested in having a specific measure passed. It gives them a mechanism to mobilize as a group of citizens, to put that first in front of us and then potentially in front of the voters as well. And the way that this works is the group of citizens who is interested in this drafts up language that would remain intact for the entirety of the process. So you could imagine that if it ultimately gets in front of the voters, the language at the beginning of the process ideally goes through all the signatures and approvals and ends up in front of the voters in the same way. So the, the group of interested residents would create the language. They then have 10 voters sign an affidavit, including their residential address, their names, and those 10 voters become the, think of it as like the petitioning committee, so the, the group that's behind it. And the first signature on those 10 is the clerk, so the, the main point of contact for that group. That group then needs to collect signatures totaling 50 voters, so, you know, additional 40 signatures. If they have those signatures accompanied by an affidavit, which is the signed kind of names of the 10 voters, it's also a statement in the affidavit about the committee knowing that it's responsible for circulating the petition for signatures. It's also responsible for filing the petition in the proper form. If they submit that affidavit along with the signatures of 50 voters to the town clerk, that sort of kicks off the process. So that's step one. The town clerk then delivers it to the town attorney, and the town attorney, within 15 days, determines at least two things. One is, is this something that can lawfully be proposed as an initiative? So you can imagine if somebody wanted to change the tax at the state level or something, you know, that, that isn't something that we have control over. So you could imagine, you know, there, there might be some feedback or rejection of something like that. So the first thing, make sure is it something that you can actually push through the process? And there's some specific language in the charter about that. And then the second is, is the language provided, done so in a way that can be lawfully adopted by the town council in its present form? And so if you think about the advice that, you know, the town attorney often gives us, you know, there are ways that things need to be phrased so that they can travel through the legislative process. And so the town attorney weighs in on both of those things. Is it something that, you know, can be done with this mechanism, and is it written in a way that can persist through the entire process? The town attorney then provides that opinion back in writing. If the opinion is that, you know, it fails one of those two criteria, it returns then to the petitioners, and the petitioners do need to start the process over again, and I'll say some more comments about that. If it's successful, it then moves back to the town clerk, and the town clerk puts it on the official signature papers that you might see people walk around with, gives it back to the petitioning committee, and that starts a clock. So the petitioning committee then has 10 days to collect the signatures from voters, and it has to be 10% of the, of the voters need to sign the petition. So within 10 days, they need to collect signatures from 10% of the voters. When that is done, they then submit it back. It goes through the registrar of voters, who confirm that, you know, they have the right signatures, and then ultimately, it comes in front of the town council. We do not have the ability to amend it or change it. The language, again, persists from the beginning to the end. So we could decide to accept it, in which case, it would move forward through our approval process. If we do not want to do that, the alternative is that it goes in front of the voters. And so there's a, there's a clock on that, there's a timeframe where the measure then goes in front of the voters, and there's a, a process and a certain number of voters that need to kind of approve it. So that's how those move forward. So goes through the initial part of the process with all the signatures, gets in front of us. We can either approve it or move it to the voters. If it moves to the voters, they can either approve it or deny it. And then there is a clause in the charter. If it does pass, there's a, a citizen sort of response clause where other citizens can collect signatures in opposition, and that sort of kicks off another process on it. So that's, that's the way it's written. There is some, there were some questions in this exchange about that process and some concerns that I would like to put in front of the, the council for consideration as we're thinking through the charter itself. So the first one was the petition signatures. You can imagine at the beginning of the process, it's difficult to, might be difficult to collect 50 signatures. If it moves through and gets to the point where the town attorney weighs in on it and the language isn't correct, the town attorney gives it back. And there was a question of, do they then need to get 50 signatures again? And the answer is yes. And the reason for that is that the language that somebody signed has now changed. So the thing that they kind of put their signature against in the beginning will now be different, and so you have to go through the process of getting 50 signatures for the new language. That was a question. And then I, I would raise the concern there is, you know, that in the charter, it might be helpful to make that a little more clear so people understand, you know, how at the beginning of the process to, to position things in a way where they can survive, where the wording can survive the process. The second thing is there was some concern about the signature timeframe. If you remember, once it gets submitted to the town clerk, the town clerk puts it on official paper, gives it back to the group, and the group has 10 days to collect signatures from 10% of the voters. There was some concern, question about when does that timer start? The timer starts when the, the group receives the official documents back. That starts the 10 days. And then there was some concern about 10 days is a short period of time. You could imagine this is potentially over 2,000 people that you would need to get signatures from, and there was a note that I think a charter review may have discussed or even recommended extending this to 30 days, but it's in the charter right now. I raised that for awareness in case a counselor wants to pick that up as a charter change. I think, looking into it, the intention, I think, when the original 10 days was picked, was to almost put in a little bit of a pressure valve to make sure that, you know, something that that goes through this alternate mechanism of legislation really does have the support of the town. And so, you could imagine that there's a hope that if it's important enough, you might be able to get that number of signatures in ten days. But the group that is currently working on this mentioned that our population has grown in that period too. And so, would like us to consider, as individual councilors, potentially changing that to a longer period. The last question that surfaced during this process is, if you remember, there's a point in here where the town attorney says whether or not the language will survive. And the town attorney does that in very sort of formal language. Here's what will survive, here's what won't. And in this case, provided alternate wording that could survive. And there's a question of, okay, now they have to go back and get fifty signatures. You know, is it possible to interact with the town attorney to just make sure the new version that they're going to bring through is correct? And the headline answer there is that it's not possible to interact with the attorney beyond what the town attorney provides. And the reason for that is elsewhere in the charter, as a community, we created rules for the town attorney and the way that the town attorney interacts with the town. Specifically, I am allowed to ask the town attorney for advice on behalf of the council for a matter in front of us. Beyond that, the Town Manager is allowed to give direction to the town attorney. But it's specifically concerning town officers, multiple member bodies, so our committees or a town department. And we specifically call out that the town attorney can interact with the Town Council, the Town Manager, and other town departments. So, we did intentionally bound the town attorney. And that is because there are scenarios where the town attorney may need to represent our interests if they're potentially different from a resident's interest. So, it's very specific boundary. As we all know, we also have to go through the Town Manager if there's a general question outside of something that's ahead of us. So, and the same with other town employees. We can't directly give direction to town employees. So, that's the summary. I say that to clarify, but I would also welcome if there's any other town councilors that would like to share a perspective or, yeah. Counselor Gallagher?
No, I think that, you know, you explained the procedure is certainly in place to have this done. And I think it's certainly warranted that we have it in place because there always should be a mechanism for the citizens to bring something forward that's of concern to them. But I, so, I mean, the process, it is what it is. But what I sit here and think about is what would be an example? What would they bring, what could be brought forward? You know, like, what referendum? I'm trying to think of an example of what would they do now? So, and I say that because, you know, we could do that. If a citizen came to us and said, you know, we want X done, we would sponsor legislation and it moves forward. But if we refuse to do that, then this mechanism is in place, which it should be. But I'm sitting here trying to think of what would precipitate something like that. And under eight dash four, there's a lot of things that you, they can't do, which to me, if I read those, I'm like, well, I'm sitting there going, well, what can they do? What would be an example? And then, why wouldn't they approach one of us to say, hey, will you sponsor this? Put it through the process and go from there? So, that's what I'm thinking about. You know, you don't, you know. I'm just trying to think of an example.
Yeah.
But I'm glad, you know, the procedure is, should be there, yes.
It's a great point. I think the places where we might see it exercised is where someone wants to change an ordinance, let's say, and doesn't think that that change would be supported by the sitting council. I will say, there are scenarios, I've seen them, I've done it myself, where we will bring, a counselor will bring forth something on behalf of a citizen so that it can be discussed at the council, even though they personally might not vote in favor of it.
Right.
And so, I think, you know, to your point, our hope is that the first request comes to a counselor. And, you know, there are different councilors on this. Each of us have our own sort of different perspective. So, you could potentially even sort of shop an idea between councilors, right? But the hope is that we could move an idea through the council process prior to that. But that is the process. You know, I think there was a lot of, you know, I think, sort of discussion around access to the town attorney. And I think there are so many scenarios where, you know, kind of public interaction with our town attorney, you know, would just sort of create some challenges that I think, you know, just the charter, for good reason, states that that's a limited interaction. But we do, I would echo your sentiment. Contact a counselor, you know, I think all of us are in favor of debate. We like to bring ideas out into the open and talk them through. And so, that's always a great first step. Any additional comments on this one? Yep, Counselor Lindy?
Just to thank you for the comprehensive nature that you presented this to us. And it's always good for everybody to know that we are open to people approaching us to bring issues forward to the town.
Great, thank you. Yeah, Counselor Chase?
Thank you. Mr. President, I certainly would agree with the comments that have been made thus far insofar as my personal preference would also be that the public would approach us firstly with any kind of recommendation that they might, they might ask us to consider. And it is important that this mechanism be in place. One question that arises to me, I'm not aware that in the ten-year history of our charter that this particular provision has been amended at all over time. And I have to wonder if there is any change in state law with respect to anything, including matters such as the number of voters or the period of time in which to obtain signatures, if anything, and with respect to those matters might have changed that we're unaware of. But, you know, insofar as it's a mechanism that's part of our charter, it should be there. I do consider it to be really, from the standpoint of the citizens, really something of a last resort. If they feel that they're not going to have a, you know, either receive an open hearing or receive a supportive hearing for whatever their measure may be, it is important they have recourse this way.
Great, thank you, Counselor Chase. Yeah, Dr. Perry?
Just a quick comment based on what Counselor Chase was just saying. This being obviously part of the charter, was this ever reviewed by our Charter Review Committee or any changes ever suggested about this part?
I do have to go back and look. I do believe it was reviewed, and I do believe that the date component was suggested as a change. But I'll need to go back and confirm that. And I would, maybe if I could just add one more thing to the public, if there are topics, you know, that you would like to present to us, in addition to having a counselor sponsor it, there are also opportunities to speak here outside of public comment. So, if somebody would like to present an idea, you know, this is an open forum where all ideas can be presented. And so, please reach out to me and we can, again, put things on the agenda for discussion and consideration. And I would encourage anyone who's considering this process or thinking through it, as we mentioned, reach out to a counselor and see if that might be a better option. And if not, if there's still confusion, you know, please let a counselor know and we can do our best to help you navigate it. Any additional comments? Okay. We will move on then to Item K, Committee Reports. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to Legislation for Action. The first item we have is Item A, Order O, FY24-013, Prior Fiscal Year Bill. Budget Finance Meeting on 11/7/23, voted to...
We voted three to auto-recommend to the council.
Thank you. And then the Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend at their 10/30/23 meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Great, thank you. The motion passes. The next item we have is Item LB, Order O, FY24-014, Acceptance of Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Competitive Grant at the Budget and Finance Meeting earlier tonight.
We voted three to zero to recommend to the council.
Great, three to zero vote to recommend. The Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend at their 10/30/23 meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Great, thank you. The motion passes. The next item we have is M, Old Business. We have none. The next item we have is N, New Business. We have two. I mentioned earlier that the Town Manager is out. I will ask the Assistant Town Manager to just give us a really quick introduction for both of these as we move through it. The first is Item A, Order O, FY24-015, Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Thank you, Mr. President. In short, this transfer request to our sewer enterprise funds fiscal revenue projection in the spring was higher than the sewer rates that were in effect at the time of the passage of our annual budget. The new sewer rates, which these projections were based upon, have not been implemented yet and cannot be enacted until the rate study is finalized and the council votes it. To remain in compliance with the DOR Reporting Regulations, this request transfers money from our sewer, retains earnings to the sewer operational budget to ensure that the fund is properly funded. Our Acting Finance Director is here should you have additional questions, but we request that this be forwarded to our Budget and Finance and Finance Committees for consideration.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none. I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Sorry, muted, yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Great, thank you. The motion passes. The next item we have is Order O, FY24-016, Transfer Order Sewer Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase One. I'd ask the Assistant Town Manager to provide an update.
Thank you. This, as you know, the town voted, the Town Council voted $43 million for the Morris Avenue project. Of that project, $2.8 million was not eligible for reimbursement. The council voted in fiscal '22 to appropriate the $2 million of that 2.8. This request fully funds the $2.8 million commitment from the town. Our finance team is paying expenses for the project now, so sustaining a positive cash flow balance in our capital project fund is essential to avoid short-term borrowing and other costs. Our sewer retained earnings stands at approximately about $3.5 million, which will cover this transfer, this transfer and the previous transfer that we requested. And it would still leave us with about $2.5 million for future capital costs.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none. I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Could we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Chase? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Sorry, I went the wrong way. Mr. Chase, Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
The motion passes. That concludes New Business. The next item we have is O, Citizen Comments. I would invite anyone from the public who would wish to speak to approach the podium. I would ask that you try to keep their remarks to three minutes. Thank you. And announce your name and address. The light isn't working, but the microphone is.
Sorry. Peter O'Nauris from Mara Drive. So, thank you, Eric, for all of that information with regards to that mechanism. Just a couple of the comments because of the way we work. Number one... Excuse me, can you push the button again because it's off? Perfect.
Okay. We're good? All right.
You can restart if you'd like.
Peter O'Nauris from Mara Drive. Eric, thank you for going through the citizens' mechanism there for participation. So, a couple of the comments was that I was thinking as you went through this. One is, I think I was slightly misguided because I didn't realize going to a council at first with this particular thing versus, it sounds like if the counselor, the council in general was opposed to whatever the petition is, then it would be, we would go through this mechanism to get the public involved so that they can decide which way to go. So, that's good to know. However, if we do go down this mechanism in that specific case and then the attorney gets involved to make sure that it's in whatever legal way it needs to be said, and you're saying we don't have access even though we've gone through the particular protocol to have him look at it, we've now engaged him. So, why is it that we can't talk to him? Or would it be that we have to go to someone like yourself, Mr. Moore, or someone else to say, well, we don't agree with what the attorney wrote, we want it written this way? Or we need clarification because we don't know if what he's stating is absolute so that we don't go through these cycles of getting fifty signatures multiple times because some wording has been changed? So, that is a concern because I'm, we need to understand specifically how that communication's going to happen because if I'm going to go out and get more signatures, I'm hoping I'm only going to have to do it a second time and not a third and fourth because the language keeps getting changed and we keep going through the same process of getting it approved by the attorney. Other than that, that's all the comments I have with regards to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the public like to speak?
Yeah, very quickly, Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. Somebody asked a question about the transmission lines, delivery lines in town. There is actually a public website that you can go in and the grid and Eversource, all those lines are actually color-coded for all of the surrounding towns. I've had opportunity to look at those for another project that I've been working on as Energy Committee Chair regarding solarization. And I would recommend anybody who wants to know, and I can provide you with the email, the link if you want. But anyway, they're all available. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak? Nope, seeing none. I will now close public comment, citizen comments. We'll move on to Item P, Counselor Comments. We'll start with Counselor Lindy.
Sure. Just wanted to remind people that I believe Saturday, the 11th, is the deadline for fundraising for the Winter Wonderful. There's an event happening at, I think it's the Cole Parish House behind Boydton Hall that people can go to. Same thing with Fourth of July. If the money isn't raised, the lights don't go up. And it looked beautiful last year. So, I would just encourage anybody to go. It's a low cost for the ticket and there's entertainment and fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lindy. Next, we'll go to Zoom for Counselor Robinson. Do you have any comments?
None for me. Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you. We'll come back to the room. Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I did have the pleasure today to attend the Veterans Day Ceremony at the Senior Center and together with Counselor Gallagher. And I thought it was extremely well-received as it has been for a number of years now. It featured the singing trooper and it had a very, it was well-attended and I think very, very well-received. And I have to give kudos, I think, to Emily Williams and the staff at the Senior Center for having put together such a wonderful, enjoyable event to serve, to dedicate to the service of our veterans. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Counselor Chase. Next, Dr. Perry?
Thank you. As just mentioned earlier, I want to again extend condolences to the family of Ron Ledoux. He worked for the town for many, many years and led our highway department for a number of years. of years, and unfortunately, didn't get to enjoy many retirement years from his recent retirement. So, I just wanted to again extend condolences to their family and thank him for his years of service to the town. Secondly, I just, you know, remind everyone, the Veterans Day Parade is coming up this weekend. Saturday, November 11th is going to be in East Bridgewater. Big event, all three towns combined, and it is East Bridgewater's 200-year anniversary for their town. So, if you can make it on out, hopefully the weather's cooperative and we'll support all the towns and our veterans on that particular day. Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Counselor Murphy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I too, along with Counselor Chase, was able to make the veterans' luncheon today at the Senior Center, and, you know, kudos to Emily Williams, the Director of the COA, and our Assistant Town Manager who helped put this all together. It was just a great event, and, you know, it's hard for me, and I'm sure it is for a lot of the counselors, to be able to attend day events like this. You know, I happened to take the day off today for other things, but I had the time to attend it, and it was really nice to see the veterans there. And Dan Clark, the singing state trooper, and his wife went on for a little over an hour of singing patriotic songs. It was really, really nice. It was just, and I got a little pasta and meatballs out of it too, so it wasn't bad. And also, I want to note that the Mitchell Elementary First Grade Classroom of Mrs. Littlefield and Mrs. Johnson, students were there as well, and I think Counselor Chase will agree, they learned how to salute, right? That's one thing they learned how to do. It was just a night, a very nice event at the Senior Center. I know that's done every year. I've attended it before, but it's been a couple of years and I've been able to get away during the day. And as Counselor Perry has said, the Veterans Day Parade, the Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade, which is now this year being hosted by East Bridgewater, will be this Saturday, 11:00 AM. I hope to see a few of my colleagues there, and I will bring the banner, so two of us will hold it and march down Spring Street to the Common in East Bridgewater. But, I encourage all the residents to come out. This is an interesting year with all that's happening in the world, and it's, we always need to remember those that are currently serving, those that have served. It's an important time to get out and respect that. So, I hope to see a lot of you along the roadway in East Bridgewater on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gallagher. Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I just would like to reiterate what my prior counselor said about the Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade. Unfortunately, I'd be out of state, but every year, regardless of the town that hosts it, put on a great showing. It's to march in it and to see the people lining the streets with flags. You know, the kids are very excited. There's also, there'll be a ceremony at 11:00 AM on the East Bridgewater Town Common, which if people can't make it to the actual parade route, I would recommend people going to the Common. That's always a very moving ceremony from there as well. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Counselor George. Counselor McKinnon, I was not able to attend this evening, so the last one is me. Unfortunately, I will also be out of state this weekend and can't attend, but I'm sure it'll be a great event, and I also encourage everyone to go and show your support and thank the counselors who are attending for their support. I'd also like to thank the town clerk for, this past Saturday, she held an event to help potential candidates learn about running for office. It was a great event with some great food and some good participation, so we appreciated seeing some of the Bridgewater residents, some neighbors come out and express their interest in running, learn more about running. If anyone was not able to attend that but is interested in running for an office, please feel free to reach out to any of us. All of us are happy to talk about how it's done, the commitment involved, and to sort of share our perspective. So, the town works best when I think the people in the town are working with it, so we'd love to see more participation in the elections. And then, the last thing, just to echo the comment about the lights, I think the last I saw, there was a little ticker and it looked like we were somewhere around 20% of the goal, and a lot of people were saying, "Well, you know, didn't we already buy the lights?" I think people may not realize there is a significant investment in the crew to put that level of light display up in the center of town, and so, the funding goes to putting it up, goes essentially to supporting the lights and also removing it at the end of the season. So, it is an expensive effort. It's also, was really well-received last year, and so, if people want to see that again, I encourage everyone to, you know, maybe donate a little bit to help make sure that that can happen. It is a citizen-run activity. The town doesn't do any of the decorations on the Common. Those are all done by local community volunteers. That's it for me. That concludes the council comments. We can move ahead to item Q, Executive Session. We have none this evening, so we can move ahead to item R, Adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Let's do a roll call vote.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?